Welcome to the Wilmington School Committee meeting of Wednesday, February 8. I had to think about that. I think it's because I need a snow day tomorrow.
So go ahead and announce it.
Wish granted.
Wish granted, we have no school tomorrow. Yay.
Sad, sad.
Sad, sad.
For the parents.
Yeah, for the parents, that's a sad thing. Can let all members be shown as present except for Mrs. Bonish and Mr. Mullis. Otherwise, all are accounted for. If you could join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we dive into our agenda this evening, I just wanted to let people know we may take things out of order this evening because we also have our annual budget hearing and that's to begin promptly at 7:30. So to keep things moving along and make sure that we're able to move to the budget hearing at 7:30, we might take things out of order. But we'll kick it off with our items by consensus. And I'm going to try to group these as close and as much as we can. The first item is approval of minutes from January 25, 2017, regular session. I believe that all of those, all of us can vote on that. I'll ask for a motion to approve those minutes, please. Mrs. Kane, seconded by Mr. Talbot. All those in favor? That would be unanimous. The next item is an approval of the Target Field Trip grant to Diana Hill for $700. Mrs. Benton, would you like to make any comments on that?
Thank you. This grant will allow the life-scale students to go over to Target to do a ceramics class. And we want to thank Target for the $700 grant.
That's great.
Very generous.
Okay. I believe that we can all vote on that. Could I have a motion to approve the Target Field Trip grant? Mr. Buork, seconded by Mrs. Burns. All those in favor? That would be unanimous. The next item is an approval of an out-of-state field trip for the high school to Greece and Italy, and I believe that's over April vacation of 2018. Any comments or anything to tell us about?
Say that we have two other teachers that are sponsoring this trip. Lisa Judtberg, Mara Tuckett in the audience, if you have any questions. I will say this, it sounds like a wonderful trip. I'd want to go.
I was thinking that. Can I go? Can I go? Mrs. Burns?
I have a quick question. I know we've used EF towards a lot of our school trips historically. What's, why Explorica? And was this a bid-out process as well?
We traveled to the World War II trip with Explorica.
Okay.
That was the company that we used. We didn't bid the trip out because that was, the policy had changed, so the bids didn't have to go out anymore.
Oh, okay.
It was a custom trip, so.
I see. All right. Thank you very much.
We're very happy with the company. They were really great to work with the last time. And our program consultant did the same.
I just think because it's an odd pocket expense for families.
Yes, no objection.
Having the options to compare, you know, prior to is beneficial, especially for more attendance. But that's one, I wish you all the best and have a wonderful trip.
Thanks.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Talbot.
Is this, I guess, going, you know, because you're supposed to go to Cuba and that, there wasn't a lot of interest in it. Is this replacement, I guess, for that?
Right, it would be a replacement trip. We put out, after there was no, we only had three students who wanted to come on the Cuba trip. So we put out a poll on Twitter and through our classroom accounts to see where kids wanted to go, and then we kind of planned backwards from there.
Okay. Okay. And so you just, was there already money into Explorica?
Nope. There was no money.
No, but you just said, instead of doing Cuba, we're going to do Greece and Italy, I think it was.
After the students picked Rome, they picked Rome, really, where they wanted to go.
Okay. Good luck.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the field trip to Gredeley and, Gredeley, Greece and Italy? No? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve this field trip. Mrs. Kane, seconded. Mrs. Burns. All those in favor? That looks like unanimous. Excellent. All right. Moving right along here, I'm going to group items D and G together because I believe all of us present can vote on those. So under item D, we've got warrants, G48, R212, L22, L23, FS19. And then item G is the warrant CF01. Can I have a motion to approve those warrants, please? Mr. Talbot, seconded by Mrs. Kane. All those in favor? That would be unanimous. Thank you. Okay. We have item E, which is the payroll warrant for a week ending February 1, 2017. Could I have a motion to approve the payroll warrant, please? I've got Mr. Buork first and the second. Mrs. Burns, thank you. All those in favor? We have one abstention. All right. And then the last two items, we have warrant CB05 and warrant sped 11. Can I have a motion to approve those warrants, please? Mr. Talbot, seconded by Mrs. Kane. Thank you. All those in favor? And we've got two abstentions on that, please. Thank you very much. And that takes us through our items by consensus. Our next item, we have our student representative report.
All righty.
Thank you.
Good evening. I hope you're all doing well. Wilmington High School has been winding down for mid-years, which took place last month, and we've begun quarter three. The school year is going by really fast. Last week, there was a fundraiser by the local Heroes Club to send Teddy grams to wounded veterans for Valentine's Day. The environmental club has continued with their carpooling raffle every week in order to promote a healthier way to get to school for the environment. Also, it's time to sign up for Bread and Roses. This is an excellent community service project for students who can commit to bringing food for the monthly meal at Bread and Roses in Lawrence, MA. On February 16, there's an opportunity for students to speak Spanish at lunch with classmates and teachers. On the 20th, strings is heading to the North and South Intermediate Schools in order to hold their annual Arch of Bo ceremony for graduating fifth years. February vacation is just around the corner. We're starting on the 20th and going to the 24th, so that should be a pretty nice rest for students and teachers, not so much for parents. And that is all I have for you tonight. Thanks so much, and I hope everyone's safe tomorrow in the snow.
Great. Thank you very much for your report.
What is Bread and Roses, actually?
So, from my understanding, it's a food bank-type area for people in need who can come, and students are able to bring food in order to provide them with a meal for that night.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your report. All right. Our next item is the superintendent's report.
Back in the fall, NIASC, as you know, does an evaluation every 10 years and every five years. They ask for a progress report, and included in your packet this evening is the response to recommendations that NIASC had made. Apparently, the district got an extension, and it has gone, was mailed in this week. Linda Peters is in the audience if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments on the report?
I have a quick question.
Mrs. Burns.
Was the, was this, the NIASC, was this, was there some issues with accreditation piece a couple of years ago with this? Or am I thinking of something else? I don't know if it was this particular accreditation.
There were no, I don't believe there were any issues with the accreditation. The previous administration had some concerns or questions about how we were responding to it, but it was not from NIASC.
All right. No, I just didn't know if it was, I was, I'm thinking.
If I remember right, there was some talk about, some concern about being accredited if we were still in that former facility. I think, is that?
Well, that was originally, yes.
That was, yeah, that was.
I think that's, yes.
Yes.
Sorry, thank you.
And help us get this new facility.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Kane?
I just ask, if the items that are in progress, do they have a full five years to finish those, or does it, does it mean they're supposed to finish, they're supposed to be finished sooner?
As long as we have a timeline, my understanding is they're, they're okay.
That's good, because that gives you something to be working towards.
Yeah.
I like that, yeah.
Great. Thank you for that report. And Mrs. Peters, we appreciate the work that goes into that. That's quite a bit, quite a bit of work. Okay. Our next item is under Old Business, and we've got an update on the superintendent's search. That would be me. So, on Monday evening, we kicked off our planning and our discussion on how we were going to approach the search. We started off with kind of a draft of a task list to start fleshing out ideas and things we needed to consider. Some of the highlights, four years ago, we used an organization, MAS, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. We used them in the place of a search firm to assist us with the process. As we discussed Monday night, since there's five of us still on the school committee that had gone through this process prior, we're going to go on it on our own. We think we can handle it and are comfortable with the process, understanding that if we get down the road a little bit and decide, geez, we really need some help, we can always revisit whether or not to use a search firm at that time. We had an initial discussion on the search criteria and the job description, so really what we think we're looking for in our next superintendent. We started fleshing out a timeframe with the understanding that we might need to adjust and be pretty flexible as we move on, but we needed a place to start. So, as of yesterday afternoon, our opening has been posted internally and externally. We're hoping to receive a good number of candidates. This time, it's a little bit different than last time, we actually have an HR person working for the district, Ken Storlazzi, so he is going to be of assistance to us. So that posting has been put out there. We asked for a deadline of March 6 for people to respond to us. And since Ken had put the posting together yesterday afternoon, one question has arisen. We had talked about placing the opening on the MASs website and having them advertise it and promote it for us. MASs stands for the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. But it's $2,400 for that posting. So I'm going to ask for a little discussion on, do we think that that is a viable expense, or do we think, let's wait and see what happens, and we can always revisit that later?
Could you?
Mrs. Burns?
Excuse me. Could you speak a little bit as to external, where we are posting it externally, so that may?
Yep. Right now, we're on School Spring. And School Spring is a site that not only is it on their specific website, but they push it out to other websites. So somebody, for example, might see it on monster.com, or to your point, Tom, from Monday night on Indeed, something like that. But they push it out. So we might want to give it a little time and see what sort of response we get, or we may say, geez, that $2,400 might be money well worth spent. Mr. Buork.
I certainly don't want to be penny-wise and pound-foolish, but I think we should give, let's give the posting a little bit of time and see what kind of response we get.
Mrs. Burns?
I concur. I would rather not, I mean, it's such a small organization with superintendents, people know that we're looking, and a lot of them who are interested in Wilmington are anticipating this process starting, so I would, I would like to, I think it would be prudent to just advertise the School Spring and see where that leads us.
Okay, great. Any other comments on this side? Mrs. Kane?
I totally agree, and I think that the bottom line here is that we can go back and change something.
Yes.
So we're not giving it like two months to see if it works, we're giving it two weeks.
Right.
See, so we can still work through it.
Okay.
But I think, just a couple of things I think that I shouldn't be saying, so I won't.
Okay. Mr. Talbot, any?
I'm fine with going with, not doing quite as of yet, let's hold off.
Hold off, okay. And I'm in an agreement with that, that let's just kind of see what happens. We can always adjust as we move through, but I don't want to be writing out checks in the district's checkbook if we don't have to. So could I ask for a motion, and we'll take official vote on that, just?
I'll offer that as a motion.
Right.
We do not post on MASs for the time being.
For the time being. Mrs. Burns, the second. Okay, all those in favor? Great, that would be unanimous. Thank you very much. Just for the public's information, as we move forward in this process, an update for the superintendent's search will be on every school committee meeting agenda now going forward, and we will share out any discussions or decisions or any progress that has been made. The last item, I wanted to just double-check with everyone. We had discussed on Monday night about putting another date on the calendar for us to meet just to discuss the superintendent's search, kind of a check-in, see where we're at, and we had talked about doing something on Monday, February 27. And our homework was to check our calendars and see if that works. Everybody in agreement that that seems to be okay?
It's going to make it work.
Okay. All right. So I will get that meeting posted, but the only agenda item would be the superintendent's search. We'll do 7 o'clock again, and I thought the high school library worked out well for a meeting location, and certainly we would welcome the public to join us. We had a nice group there with us Monday night. Maybe I'll bring cookies again and see if we can get some more people to join us. Mrs. Kane?
I'd just like to add one thing.
Sure.
Mrs. Brusad has a background that is extremely helpful to us, and as does everyone, we're all bringing something different to the table. So I feel that if anyone worries that it's just us, we have a lot, and we opened it up to, to the people who were in the audience with us, and they had a whole other section to bring. So I think that if people really want to have a say and have input, really come to these meetings, please, because we really do, we really are happy to have people there. But I feel confident that we have enough variety, and with the help of the people in the central office, we are able to go forward, and we can revisit if we have to.
Exactly. Great. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Did I forget anything? No?
No, that was great.
All right, great. I'm looking at the clock, we still have a little bit of time before our budget hearing. School options for the facilities master plan.
So, a couple of weeks ago, at the Town of Wilmington Facilities Master Plan, a few of the school committee were present, and that evening, we reviewed all of the options for the schools, and at the end of the evening, they asked us to bring it back to the school committee so that you could vote on which option is most favorable to you, so that they can cost it out. Just want to remind you that there were five options, and a sixth one was added by me because I didn't think that the town had thought through all of the options, and I thought there was one that we could add. So the first, you know, two were the existing schools targeted improvements, and the second one was existing schools improved to meet current space standards. Next one was for four elementary schools. Plan four was for one pre-K kindergarten school and three elementary schools. Plan five was for one preschool, one pre-K school, three K to five elementary schools. And Plan six was to keep the physical geographical setup as is, which is splitting the town in half, going with two pre-K to two grade, pre-K to grade two schools, and two grade three to grade five schools. That would eliminate one transition for students. It would also provide equity across town, and we would close the Wildwood and the Boutwell and do renovations on the other four schools in order to make that plan work.
Any questions or comments at this point? Mrs. Burns?
I have to say, I do like Option Six the best, because I think, age-wise, I think it's a good matchup. I had a question, and this may be the cart before the horse type of question, but with regards to busing, you know, the kindergarten through second grade, will we have, will we have to add more routes, or how was, I'm interested in keeping our transportation cost-friendly, which I mean is free to the town, and I was just wondering if any kind of pre-anticipation about what it could look like for transportation if we did, if Option Six was?
So currently, the kindergarten, pre-K and Ks have a different starting time than the rest of the district. We can look at that going forward.
It's just the number of students per bus is the?
But we would, we do not anticipate any additional charges for transportation with this setup.
We have 16 buses right now. It's really driven by the middle school.
Okay.
So all 16 we use for the middle school, and then they kind of split up and do the different schools and the starting times.
I just didn't know, like, the number of heads per bus.
Yeah.
You know, the kindergarten through second grade was, I think, the concern.
Mm-hmm.
But I guess, and again, I understand this early in the game.
We'll work through all that, yeah.
I'd actually like to see it pre-K to two, because I think that the second grade is, are old enough to be, you know, sort of mentors to the younger children on the buses.
Agreed. Agreed. Thank you. Mr. Talbot?
I too like six choices there, but just wondering, with closing the Boutwell and the Wildwood, what would happen to that property?
So, the recommendation on the Wildwood would definitely be to demolish the building because it, it does, it does not have town sewer, and it is not a very attractive building when you enter it. That, that the school committee could vote to turn that back over to the town, that property. The Boutwell school, because it's on a school campus with the two other schools there, I would recommend that the school committee look to rent it to another private school facility. It's like, for example, remember a few weeks, a couple of meetings ago, the May Center came in here because they're, you know, have moved their school to Wilmington? Look at a private school, or look at a collaborative seam. Our collaboratives always looking for space. So I would recommend holding on to that building and renting it.
Could it possibly, I know this is kind of a hot topic of sorts, but replace the house as like the, you know, administrative building?
It could, but I think the town has different plans. They're looking to combine the Town Hall and the school administration building and possibly put it across the street at the swing.
Just a quick comment. I think that eliminating a transition is, would be a great thing for the students. So I also, I'm on board with Option Six.
C, oh, Mrs. Kane?
I'm on board, too.
Okay, all right.
Did we just take a vote?
I think we sort of did. So, let's do this formally. I will ask for a motion that we move to vote on the preferred scenario, which would be Option Six, given on the school options for the Town of Wilmington Facilities Master Plan. Would somebody like to offer that as a motion, please? I got all sorts of hands.
So moved.
All right. Mr. Buork, seconded by Mrs. Burns. All those in favor of selecting Option Six as our choice, please signify by raising your hand. And that would be unanimous. Thank you very much.
And we will continue to keep reposted. They're hoping to finalize the work by the end of the fiscal year.
Oh, great, okay.
When's the next meeting?
In March. I will get the date out to you.
I wonder if we should just say for the record, in case people are tuning in tonight and have not been following this, this is not, we're not planning to actually do this right away.
Right, right, right.
This is a plan for the future.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes.
It's not happening tomorrow or even in a year, probably. It's probably a couple of years down the road. All righty. I see 7:25. I'm thinking we could take Item C, the school year calendar, as our next discussion item before the budget meeting.
So last spring, you approved this calendar without the meeting dates, CIT dates, and this year, this calendar now has those dates in. I will tell you that I took interim superintendent privilege, and I'm recommending that in December, the 22nd be a half-day, because next year is the shortest school vacation, and that is a full week, and I can't imagine what the teachers are going to be like and the students that afternoon, so I'm recommending a half-day on the 22nd. So that's a change in policy.
Okay. That sounds good to me. Mrs. Kane?
And we can always read, adjust this should the, in the negotiations with the teachers, another one might pop up, or one less or something.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? The only one I was curious about, and this is purely being a parent here.
I know what you're saying.
You know which one I'm going to ask about, right?
I am. And I can tell you the reason, the November 7.
Yes.
Because I recommended against this, but found out that for the past three years, schools, districts have been collaborating to have their professional development day on the same day so that we can send teachers to other districts, and other districts can come here.
Okay.
So that's why it's that day.
Is that the election day?
Yes. But it's a horrible week. Do two days off is not the best.
Right. Okay. I was just going to say, let's string them together. We have a nice long weekend, right? Okay. Any other questions on the calendar? And that's for school year 2017, 2018. Any other questions, comments, observations? Okay. So we need to make a motion to approve the 2017, 2018 school year calendar. Could I have a motion to approve this, please? Mrs. Kane, seconded. Mrs. Burns. Okay. All those in favor? Great, thank you. I think that was unanimous. And I think that brings us pretty close. Pretty close to 7:30. Okay. So, at this point, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38N, we will recess this public meeting in order to conduct the annual public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2018 school department operating budget. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the regular meeting will reconvene with the agenda item budget hearing. As a matter of protocol, interim superintendent Benton will present the recommendation, recommended budget, and the school committee will then entertain any questions or comments from the public on the recommended budget. The school committee will take up its own discussion of the recommended fiscal year 2018 budget in the regular meeting. Now I'll turn it over to superintendent Benton for the presentation.
Thank you. The proposed budget amount of $38,868,945 represents an increase of $1,223,478 in spending that equates to a percentage increase of 3.25% over the FY '17 budget. Total salaries for the proposed proposal equal $30,641,802. This represents a $943,816 increase over FY '17, while the non-salary expenses total $8,227,143, or an increase of $279,662 compared to the FY '17 budget, which, so salary, it's a 3.1, .18% increase, and non-salaried's a 3.52% increase. The proposed budget was developed around goals of preserving quality class size, programs that are in place, direct service to students, and the continuation of the full-day kindergarten. If you recall, the governor cut full-day kindergarten spending last year, so that is in our operating budget this year. Major factors driving the budget are contractual obligations, increased use of technology in the classrooms, more complex special ed IEPs, and with the beautiful 21st century high school, increased utility costs. The level of funding recommended for this budget will enable the school department to address the following: will be able to maintain current staffing levels, which allows the school committee to support advantageous class size, reinstate a part-time library and media specialist at the Boutwell and at the Wildwood, and a full-time library and media specialist at the middle school. And we're actually doing that by addition by subtraction, taking a OIT position, converting that to the library and media specialist, and then just increasing at the Boutwell point two and the Wildwood point two. The Heather Peachey, who is our- The Heather Peachey, who is our head librarian, wishes to express her thanks for nine years that she's been in the Wilmington Public Schools. That's always been her goal, and she already has me started on cleaning up the kindergarten libraries and getting parents involved and getting it organized, so hopefully that will go through in the budget. But I told her I would send her, her things. We, I'd like to reinstate the professional development funds to support our staff. Wilmington has invested in a lot of our new programs, but we have not invested in the professional development funds to support the staff, and good, um, programs need good teaching strategies, and good teaching strategies include, um, professional development for the staff. The budget will ensure our legal mandates are funded, special ed, homeless transportation, and ELL. Excited about establishing a tech academy for students in the summer that will be self-supporting, that will, um, allow some of our eighth and ninth graders who will be beginning the, a one-to-one program to get a, a early start on the program, on, on, on using, um, Chromebooks, and it's a fun alternative to our sports camps, as we know not all students, um, are interested in sports. Establish Wilmington as an SEI training site for surrounding communities. The Department of Ed has made changes in the regulations for, uh, teachers' re-licensure, and one of the changes is that all teachers must take SEI training, twelve hours of it, and also twelve hours of special ed training. So this, um, for the past two years, the DESE has, um, taken, um, the, the lead on it and the courses were free, but that has ended, and so we thought we'd turn this into an opportunity for Wilmington because if we bring in teachers from other communities on, um, with, uh, tuition, that can then allow our teachers to attend it free. So we're hoping to start that. We'd like to, um, fund all contractual, uh, requirements. Wouldn't like to, we have to, utilities, union contracts and, uh, transportation contracts this, uh, year that teaches, uh, in cafeteria are up for, for negotiations. And, um, when I got here, we all had received a letter from a middle school pa, well, actually from a parent who had children in elementary and middle school about the amount of money that parents were having to spend on supplies for their middle school students, and, um, in looking at the letter, the request, it made sense to me to try and build up the account at the middle school, so we would take, in the spring, all the teacher requests for school supplies that normally go home to parents and, and purchase however much we can fund from this account, so that it would reduce the, um, the burden on parents, because some, some requests were, uh, you know, totaling a hundred dollars, and that's just not acceptable. The other, um, that's it, hung, oh, yeah, I know, the, the last thing is not listed there, but something that we, um, were able to squeeze into the budget. The CATS, which is the Performing Arts Parents Group, had, uh, come to us and asked about funding, helping to fund some of the costs of the licensure for the plays and other expenses, believing that the performing arts were not being funded at the level of the athletics. Excuse me. So we put funds in the budget to do that.
That's great.
Lastly, we have capital requests and, um, continued their telephone system, um, replacement, elementary switch project, laptop cots, exchange mailer. The original middle school tech lab, when the middle school was built, that was a state-of-the-art science lab that no other school in Massachusetts had, and it needs to be replaced. Uh, pre-K to three lab PCs, battery replacements, and a special ed van. Every effort has been made to prepare this budget so that it's fiscally responsible as well as responsive to the, um, needs of the students and the staff. Um, I wish to, again, publicly thank Paul Ruggiero for his assistance and, uh, leadership in guiding us through the process. The leadership team, we have some members here tonight, like to thank all of them for their support, and, um, can truly say I believe this is a budget that, um, supports all children. Thank you.
At this point, I would open it up to any comments or questions, observations from our public that are in the audience this evening. Yeah, I'll get us. You have to return to regular. Okay. Alright, seeing no comments or concerns from the public in the audience, if there are no further questions or comments, I will close the public hearing and return the committee to the regular meeting. Alright, so we're officially returned back to our regular meeting. At this point, I will open it up to discussion amongst the school committee members. And I saw Mr. Bjork first.
I'd just like to thank, uh, Joanne and Paul for their, their work on this. Um, it's a tr, it's tremendous testament that you were able to come in at three point two five and still get everything done. Um, and I know that Paul was a little worried about this budgeting season. Um, there are a lot of professional athletes will grow a beard during, uh, during the playoffs to show their commitment. Paul, does that vary budgeting season?
That's how I mean it, I guess.
Yeah, there you go.
His wife's not gonna be happy.
But in all seriousness, uh, this is, I think is well thought out, uh, well put together and I, and I appreciate the efforts.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Kane?
Just a curiosity question. I thought I saw one day recently a van go by that was from Wilmington Public Schools, but it's white. It's a new, so are we moving to an, I loved the, I loved it, it looked nice.
Yeah, the last few years, we purchased, um, some vans with the town, and, um, to get the blue that we used to have was a lot more expensive. Plus, they don't really make it. It was like a denim blue. Actually, a white van is, is less expensive than the blue van, so we just went with the, the, the white vans.
Well, that was a good choice. It's not, they look nice going by, yeah. Thank you.
That's great. Any other questions? Mrs. Burns?
Just segue, just piggybacking on that, um, do we have any other vans coming up for replacement or, uh, uh, in the?
I think in two thou, I think we're good for the next few years. We've probably replaced maybe five or six over the last three or four years.
Right, I was just curious as to how, when we get the...
Yeah, so we're in good shape right now, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, I think we are all set on our discussion regarding the recommended fiscal year twenty eighteen budget. So we have two motions before us that we need to make. The first motion would be the move to approve the superintendent's recommended fiscal year twenty eighteen operating budget totaling thirty-eight million, eight hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five. Could I ask for a motion, please? Mrs. Burns?
So moved.
Second, please. Mrs. Kane, thank you. All those in favor of approving the recommended budget for fiscal year twenty eighteen, please signify. Great, that would be unanimous. Thank you. And the next item that we need to take a vote on is approving the capital request for fiscal year twenty eighteen totaling three hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred. Could I ask for a motion to approve the capital request, please? Mr. Talbot, seconded by Mrs. Kane, all those in favor? And that would be unanimous. Thank you very much. Alrighty. So, going back to item B under new business, we have the Wilmington High School Program of Studies, and I believe we have a presentation from Mrs. Peters, our principal.
I'd like to invite Principal Peters up to the table, and I just want to say before I turn it over to, to Linda that, um, I love the format of the Program of Studies this year. Uh, she, you can tell a lot of work went into changing it. Uh, it, it looks wonderful. Cannot believe we're sitting here thinking about the next year's freshman class, and eighth grade is coming up to, um, learn about the high school, but it's that time of the year, so I'd like to turn it over to Linda.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Um, besides the date changes and name changes, um, we have some, I'm just gonna summarize the major changes in the book. Um, we have eliminated our college preparatory B courses. We only had three core courses at that level, and we are moving towards more inclusive instructional practices, so we are eliminating those, um, courses. Um, so all our college preparatory courses are just college prep, so we are going from college prep B, college prep A, to just college prep, our CP. So it's just that way besides our honors and AP.
Okay.
Uh, we have had to delete, uh, two courses this year, our introduction to sign language. Um, we are offering online opportunities for that as well as, uh, workshops during our interdisciplinary block for sign language. We just are not able to find a certified teacher to teach the course, and we're down to a point four position as it was, so difficult to find someone that is certified that will take that position. Uh, we also, um, had to eliminate our woodwinds, um, course. It's just not possible to schedule it, um, with the shared staff. We only have one staff member in the district that can teach it, and she just can't do it during the time we can offer it. But she is offering it as an after-school activity, so it is still continuing. Uh, we have added some courses. Um, we are adding a senior internship seminar course, which we hope, um, will help students, our seniors, to, um, decide on some internships, so we want to prepare them, uh, for that. It doesn't happen until second semester, so they have the first half of the year to determine if they wanna go into, um, a senior internship, uh, the fourth quarter, and they will take the senior internship seminar for the second half of the year. So the first quarter or the third quarter of that, uh, of the year, they will be just taking a course, and then in the fourth quarter, they'll be out on internships. Um, we are offering a foundations of writing course for our, uh, freshmen and sophomores. Um, this is really, it, it's not taking the place of an expository writing class, which we offer, but, um, we have found that there is a, a real wide range of levels in our expository writing, so we're going to have a special writing class for, um, our freshmen and sophomores, and so we just decided to change that to, uh, foundations of writing, but we're still, uh, including the expository writing as well. Those are for our upperclassmen. Uh, we are, and we have planned to, um, add an AP Statistics class next year, um, just to add to our AP, uh, program. Um, the AP Biology Lab and the AP Chemistry Labs, uh, we are hoping to have students who are taking AP Bio or AP Chem to also take this as a prerequisite. Um, it just is, um, more opportunity for them to get through the labs for these courses, and they do have a difficult time completing the coursework in the labs for these AP Science classes, so, uh, we have added this as, um, a way for them to get through the labs. Um, Digital Photo III is an advanced course. It's a year-long course, and it will help students who are interested in the photography field to, uh, create a portfolio. Um, Media Productions II, uh, we have a lot of students that have taken Media Productions I and really have enjoyed it, so we'd like to extend, uh, and offer Media Productions II class for a second semester. Um, this past year, we had two Introduction to Theater classes, and we really didn't have a large enrollment in both of them, so we are keeping one, and, um, Ms. Ingles has, um, decided to offer an Introduction to Musical Theater as a semester course, and also an Introduction to Music Theory and Arranging in place of that Introduction to Theater, um, course. And we are hoping to, we are gonna offer Italian V. We're not sure if we'll have an enrollment, but we are gonna offer Italian V. Uh, we were able to offer one section of Italian IV this year, so we may have the enrollment for Italian V next year. Um, another part of the program that changed, um, is the redesign of our senior internship program. We were trying to grow that. Um, so we have more clarification on the criteria. Uh, we've changed the criteria a little bit to be a little bit more inclusive, and, um, some of the requirements now are listed and the responsibilities are listed as well, so I think that, um, the seniors will have, um, much more, um, detailed information as to how to get into this program, and, uh, we really have worked with the seniors this year. Uh, so we have a lot more seniors that want to go out this year, so we're hoping to grow it for next year and the year after. Uh, the other courses that just made some slight changes in course descriptions, it was just a sentence or a word, uh, in the course descriptions, just for those, um, courses, and they are mostly our performing and, um, visual arts courses, just slight changes in the descriptions. Uh, and that's really the changes that were made in the program.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Kane?
Um, I'm really glad to see, year after year, seeing how you come up with such good ideas to add a little, add a little, but I seem to remember in the past, sometimes the kids' schedules didn't allow for them. They only had room for like one, one new thing or something. Is that still, do we still have that or...
Well, there's more opportunity now. They may, freshmen have the least amount of flexibility in their schedule, but the juniors and seniors have a lot of flexibility, so I think that these offerings are more geared towards the upperclassmen. The, the Foundations of Writing course is, we had a lot of students that wanted the expository writing, a lot of freshmen, and they are, um, it's just not the right place for them. The, the teachers are telling me it's just not the right place for freshmen, so this is why we're offering the Foundations of Writing, but we do have interest in that.
I appreciate your responsiveness to your staff. I think it's really important, and you can tell they're so eager and excited when, um, they know that when they come up with new ideas, that somebody's there to support them, and, and you've always been there, so thank you for that.
They're a great staff to work with. They really work hard.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? Mr. Bjork?
What was the, uh, what was the enrollment, the size of enrollment for the Introduction to Sign Language? Was that, was that a popular course?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I think it's nice that you've got some, uh, some alternative ways for them to, to get the instruction.
Yeah, it's a very popular course. It's, we didn't have a certified teacher, and, um, based on the reductions we had to make for this past year, it just didn't work. But there are other options, so...
So, yeah, digital photography, but do they teach just regular photography with like the old cameras and lenses and things like that?
No, not at all.
Oh, that's a shame.
Our new lab is, not since we came here.
The only person missing.
Yeah, shame.
Great. Any other questions?
I was just gonna say, as a, as a parent of an incoming freshman, I looked at this with a different set of eyes this year, and it got me really excited because I saw a couple of things that have changed. Year over year, I see that, that rigor being pushed just a little bit, not, not crazy that we can't control it, but I, I like to see the, the wide variety of offerings. I really feel like there's something there for everyone. I love seeing the senior internship and the addition of the preparation. How do you go about this? Because these are life skills that our kids need to learn, and I, I'm excited by that opportunity for them. Um, I was also excited by the dual enrollment with Middlesex Community College. I think that's a great opportunity for our kids, and we have such a huge variety of AP classes.
Yeah, we keep adding them.
Like, every year I've seen something different added, so congratulations. I'm, I'm very excited about it.
Thank you.
And my kid got a sneak preview, and she's all excited now too, so, that's great. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, then we need to take a vote to accept the report, uh, the Wilmington High School Program of Studies for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen year. I'll ask for that motion, please. Mrs. Kane first, Mrs. Burns second. All those in favor? That would be unanimous. Thank you, Mrs. Peters, and to your staff as well.
Linda, can you just remind me the date of the eighth grade Program of Studies night?
The eighth grade Program of Studies?
The incoming eighth grade, don't, isn't there?
We don't have that date set for the Program of Studies. It's usually in mid-March for, for the eighth graders.
Mid-March, okay. So we'll be getting that out. Thank you.
Yeah, we have a regular one for the sophomores, juniors, and, uh, seniors, actually freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, next week.
Next week, okay, great.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Public comments on everything else besides the budget. Okay, no public comments. Next item, then. Any subcommittee reports? Has anybody had a chance to meet? No? Okay. Correspondence? We don't have, Mrs. Bonnash here is our recording secretary, so I don't believe we have any correspondence. Future meeting dates and agenda items. We do not typically meet twice in the month of February because of school vacation and the budget process. We just agreed earlier in our meeting that we'll do an additional meeting on February twenty-seventh for, for the discussion on the superintendent's search. And this will be a posted, open, public meeting on March second. A friendly reminder that we will be presenting our budget to the finance committee. And this is something that traditionally the school committee has always attended. So, we hope that as many of us can be there as possible. I believe that's seven o'clock at the town hall, room nine?
Yep.
Okay, on March second. March eighth would be our first regular school committee meeting of the month. I think we will do maybe a, a shorter public session, and then we will have, hopefully have some movement on our posting for a superintendent. So, we will be adjoining to executive session that evening. I think we agree that we could all do that date. And then, our second meeting in the month of March would be March twenty-second. Okay. And I think we've covered our agenda this evening. So, with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Bjork, okay. Mrs. Kane, second. All those in favor? Excellent. Thank you very much, and have a good night.